Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Bristol, Tennessee Planning Commission Meeting of October 19th, 2020. We will do roll call.
Kelly Graham.
Here.
Malin Luttrell.
Here.
Mark Webb.
Here.
Margaret Fire Robin.
Here.
Jason Boer.
Here.
Takashi.
Here.
Joel Staten is here. Scott Gaynor.
Here.
Kevin Buck.
Here.
All present and accounted for, sir.
Thank you very much. I greatly appreciate that. We are meeting by Zoom. Consequently, we have an announcement needs to be made. Counselor, if you would make the announcement, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be glad to. As you all know by now, Governor Lee has allowed electronic meetings because of the COVID-19 pandemic, at least through October 28th, 2020. One condition of meeting electronically that I'd like to remind everybody of is that if you are attending by audio only, that is, there is no video to show who's speaking, you're asked to identify yourself by name and position when you speak. In order to proceed with meeting electronically, Planning Commission should make a determination that it's necessary to meet electronically in order to protect the health, safety, and welfare of Tennesseans in light of the COVID-19 outbreak. At this time, it would be appropriate for the members to discuss whether they think it's appropriate to meet electronically, or if no discussion is necessary, to proceed to a roll call vote and vote that meeting electronically is necessary. If there are no further questions or discussions, then, Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that you go ahead with the roll call vote.
All right. What we need, then, is a roll call vote if everybody agrees to meet electronically, please.
Kelly Graham.
Yes.
Malin Luttrell.
Yes.
Joel Staten is yes. Jason Boer.
Yes.
Kevin Buck.
Yes.
Scott Gaynor.
Yes.
Takashi.
Yes.
Mark Webb.
Yes.
Margaret Fire Robin.
Yes.
Everybody agrees, sir.
Thank you. Then we will proceed electronically. We're going to approval of minutes. We have two sets of meetings to approve. Winging this just a little bit because I didn't print off the revised agenda, but the first set of minutes we have to approve is the work session, which is from September 21st, 2020. Are there any changes to the work session minutes? As I'm looking at it, I believe the dates on it is wrong.
Yeah, it says August.
Yeah.
Yes, we'll change that.
And you're going to need to do the same thing on the regular minutes, too?
Yes.
Okay. We will vote on them individually, with the exception of the date that will have to be changed. Are there any other additions or corrections to the workshop minutes? Hearing seen none. Motion, please.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
The council has motion and second the workshop minutes with the change. Roll call.
Kelly Graham.
Yes.
Malin Luttrell.
Yes.
Joel Staten is yes. Jason Boer.
Yes.
Kevin Buck.
Yes.
Scott Gaynor.
Yes.
Takashi.
Yes.
Mark Webb.
Yes.
Margaret Fire Robin.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting. And the same thing is, we've got to change the dates. And actually, I see two places on there we have to change the dates. So, other than the date changing, is there any other changes or additions to the minutes? Hearing seen none, can we have a motion to approve said minutes?
A motion to approve minutes of September 21st with changes to the dates.
Thank you, Mr. Luttrell. Is there anybody else that will second that?
I'll second.
All right. KB has put second on the table. Any discussion? Hearing seen no discussion. Roll call.
Kelly Graham.
Yes.
Malin Luttrell.
Yes.
Joel Staten. Yes. Jason Boer.
Yes.
Kevin Buck.
Yes.
Scott Gaynor.
Yes.
Takashi.
Yes.
Mark Webb.
Yes.
Margaret Fire Robin.
Yes.
Kelly, who seconded that motion?
Kevin Buck did.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is unscheduled comments from the public. As I understand, we have some people from the public that will be, that are observing the meeting. However, at this point in the meeting, what we're talking about is anything that is not on the agenda. When we get to something on the agenda that you want to address, you will be given an opportunity at that point in time. And when you do address the Planning Commission, we do ask that you give us your name and your address. It will be for the minutes and it will be part of the public record. Can I assume we have nobody that wants to speak to the Planning Commission that, on something that is not on the agenda?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. There is no one in attendance that wants to speak on something that is not on the agenda.
Thank you, sir. We will then move on to old business. The agenda shows that we have no old business, so now we will get into new business. And under new business, we're going to hold a public hearing for a special use permit for 100 Bristol College Drive. Who's got it?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Up for consideration is a special use permit for 100 Bristol College Drive. It's for multifamily use in a B3 zone. The applicant is Scott Smile. Owners are Dave Sharp and James Richardson, Jr. With that, I will let Ms. Young present you with the material.
Good evening, everybody. So tonight, we're going to begin with a special use permit request, and Mr. Beavers read the general stats here of the owner's address, and the current zoning is B3. The request tonight is for a multifamily use. We've had at least one here lately where we've had to approve a multifamily use in a, it was in a PBD zone, so tonight will be in a B3 zone is what you will be considering. Here is an aerial map of the property along with the zoning information. So you'll see that the highlighted parcel is located on Bristol College Drive. So this is in behind the new U-Haul, old Kimart New U-Haul use on West State Street. It is on a kind of commercial cul-de-sac. The buildings that surround this are commercial in nature, so this building was once housed some Bristol College use. So, to my knowledge, it's been vacant for some time. The next slide just shows that surrounding existing zoning and existing land use. Again, all that area is zone B3, so the same zoning that's in play in the surrounding parcels. The uses, and I have a few photos here in just a second, but you have some vacant parcel to the south. You have some office and commercial use to the east, and then you have a storage unit business to the west of this property. The next slide shows just a kind of conceptual overview of the building. Mr. Smile is planning to place 10 units within the existing building footprint, so there's no new addition or no new expansion of the building footprint. There will be 10 units in this building. He is proposing to add exterior doors where each unit will be accessed from its own exterior door, which will have an awning above the door. And then his proposal will be to add some parking, kind of right there in front of the unit, so each unit would have a couple parking spaces to serve their unit. Next slide shows a, on this slide, I will say that you can see indicated, I'm sorry, Tim, if you could go back one, but there is some kind of building perimeter landscaping that he's planning with some, adding some new bushes and mulch around the perimeter of the site. Okay, so the next slide, this shows standing on Bristol College Drive, looking south. So this is looking into the parking lot. The current building entrance is on the far right side from this view, but this is the current access into the site. The next slide shows from standing down in the cul-de-sac, and that's looking kind of through the trees that are right here on the cul-de-sac at this property, looking at the existing entrance. The next slide shows from down in the opposite corner of the parking lot. So this is looking back towards Bristol College Drive from the far end of their park, of the site parking lot. And then, just a couple points. We look at this slide most every time we have the special use permit review, but there are some special criteria that governs the Planning Commission's consideration of this requested use. And in preparing to present this to you tonight, we did speak with several of the other departments within the city, such as engineering, public works, police, fire, traffic, and all those departments. So, the task, the zoning ordinance, the criteria, the zoning ordinance sets out for Planning Commission to review in terms of these special use permit applications, are those bullets that are shown on the screen now. And we'll walk through those just one by one to address how this project can meet those criteria. First of all, ingress, ingress and off-street parking. Let's see, Tim, if you don't, yeah, here we go. So you saw the access off of Bristol College Drive. They're not planning any new access points at this time, and anything final access design must be included on the site plan, which will be approved after it's submitted if the special use permit is approved tonight. They do, the multifamily use does require one and a half parking spaces per unit, so a total of 15 parking spaces. There is quite a bit of parking out here. They'll have to restripe this, and that's something we'll, you know, look at, work through, make sure everything meets our parking regulations once we go through the site plan review process. But they will be required 15 parking spaces, and they do have room to do excess of that. Refugees and service areas, there will be requirement for them to do commercial refuse collection here. It's not shown on the concept plan now, but the site plan review process, we will make sure that that is shown and that must be screened. So we will be checking that once they submit for their site plan review. Utility availability, water, sanitary sewer service is available from the city of Bristol, and electricity available, of course, by Bristol Tennessee Essential Services. When they do submit for the site plan requirement or site plan review process, they will be required to submit a landscape plan. So we will check to make sure they do meet all the landscaping requirements contained in our zoning ordinance. Next slide, next slide, sorry, signage and compatibility of a proposed exterior lighting. Any kind of signage that's put out here will be required to meet the city's zoning ordinance. Lighting as well, if added, will be required to meet the lighting ordinance, and that's a maximum of two-foot candles along all property lines, because that area is all zoned with a business zone and business uses out there. There's no adjacent residential, so they will be allowed to do two-foot candles along property lines if outdoor lighting is proposed. The proposed structure does meet the minimum setback requirements, doesn't lie within a flood hazard area, and from a density perspective, the number of units proposed is less than the maximum number of units allowed by the B3 zone. That number is 15 units per acre, so they're less than that with the 10 proposed for the existing building. And they do meet the lock coverage requirements. General compatibility, and this is the last of those criteria we look at. As I stated when we were looking at the map, this is located on a cul-de-sac that's populated with commercial uses. The variety of uses that extends along this cul-de-sac is a fire damage restoration business, mini warehouses, and then the indoor skating rink sits just behind the property. So staff feels that this development would be compatible with the current uses that are along Bristol College Drive. We did notify this project, so it was advertised on October 4th in the Bristol Herald Courier. We did place public notification signs on the site, and adjacent property owners were notified of the request by letter. We did receive two comment letters back from what we mailed out. One expressed approval and one expressed opposition. We did have some conversation with the person that expressed opposition to the project, because they requested that we contact them. And they stated in conversations that they weren't necessarily absolutely opposed to the project, but they were concerned that location of a residential use here could generate some discord between their existing business and the avenue of sound complaints, noise complaints, that the new residents might call in noise complaints about their business. One telephone recall, telephone call was received, but it was curious questions in nature, so no opinion was expressed. With that, the staff recommendation is for the Planning Commission to approve the special use permit for a multifamily use here without any conditions placed upon the property. Once again, we will work with the applicant through the site plan review process. If the special use is approved tonight, to make sure all requirements of the zoning ordinance are met. And I believe we have a couple people here to represent the project. I'm happy to answer any other questions that you all might have about the staff presentation and recommendation.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. One thing, and it was brought to my attention that I forgot to mention, is the, this meeting is not streaming over the TV channels tonight. There's some software issues with getting it on the TV channels. It is on YouTube, and will be posted within 48 hours on our website for viewing. So it still meets the governor's requirements, but we're having some technical difficulties with the TV software. Just wanted to point that out.
Thank you, sir. All right. Do we have any questions of staff about this proposal?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I'm assuming I know the answer, but, so each of these units will have one entrance, and I assume that for the size they are, that meets fire code to have one entrance?
Yes, they'll have at least one entrance on all the units, and any modifications and construction to that structure will have to meet the appropriate fire codes for the use of that structure. So they will have to go through the building codes, building plans process, also fire codes.
And also, I assume that we don't have any purview over the interior, but at one place, it says 10 units. That's what the drawing shows. Another place, it says eight. The drawing of interior shows two bathrooms, and nowhere does it talk about two bathrooms in the verbal part. So, just curious for trying to understand what the project actually entails.
They are proposing, as our understanding, 10 units right now, and they're, our understanding at this time is two-bedroom units. So, once they get their drawings in to us, the architected will know more about the project, that part of it. But they are proposing 10 units at this time.
The other question I had on the property is whether the, I would hope if they're doing all this improvement, that the parking lot itself will be repaved, or it's in pretty bad shape and would certainly take away from the aesthetic look of the project. So, just whether that is included is something we should talk about, or whether it's kind of assumed that they'll take care of it.
Well, that, as long as the parking lot meets, I mean, it's hard surface, so they would have to make sure it's hard surfaced. I don't know that, we don't have any regulations that would require them to upgrade it. If they do put in handicap spaces, have the handicap units, they'll have to make those areas meet ADA requirements.
Kevin, do we know if this is going to have independent utility connections, or will it just be one connection for the facility? You know, plumbing, electric?
We, that hasn't been determined yet with the property owner. We can serve whatever's needed there from a water sewer standpoint. Have adequate-sized lines available to service those units. If they choose to go individual meter, the sewer connection is not as critical for that, because it can all come out the same sewer service line. And then obviously, if they want individual electric meters, they'll have to work with BTS on those, putting installation of those and the appropriate fees and permits for those.
Yeah, just curious. Also, will there be any facade changes to the building, or will it just be a grooved metal building?
For that, I would have to defer to, you can ask the developers are in the attendance tonight, and if you all want, we can get them on the public participation computer, and they could probably shed more light on the utilities and facade and parking lot than I can, but we can have them on here in a moment.
Okay, thank you.
Question. To address the concern of the neighbor about noise, is there anything that can be done? I mean, it's unfair to him to, I would think, to have complaint after complaint after complaint after, you know, he's been there with the business that he has had. I can understand his concern there. Is there, is there anything can be done for that, or how is that handled?
Well, certainly, the city has a noise ordinance regardless of if your existing facility or proposed facility. So everybody has to abide by that noise ordinance, because we, so that would be how that is regulated. So if they're meeting the noise ordinance currently, then they would still be in compliance with it. If they get out of compliance, obviously, they need to address that issue.
And secondly, has there, this is kind of petty, has there been any discussion about changing the name of Bristol College Drive to something more current?
We haven't had a request to change that street name at this time.
What's the buffering situation between this property and the skate rink behind it?
Well, currently, there are trees. Let me back up to a slide here. I thought I might be able to see it on there, but this is, well, let me turn the pointer on here. This would be the skateway facility. This is a proposed development, and in this area, there are existing trees and vegetation grown up. This property, you know, Planning Commission could require as a special use that this property add buffering. If you look at our buffering chart, since this is a lesser use, intense use than the B3, the developer of this typically wouldn't be required to put buffering in for this development, because he's doing a lesser intense use than the surrounding properties. But Planning Commission could make that a requirement if they were worried about, you know, the impact of this development on other developments around it. I just, like I said, our zoning ordinance wouldn't require a less intense use R3 to be buffered as a new development from existing business properties around it, so.
Yeah, I can imagine what kind of noise there would be if he's, he's skating inside, unless you're, you know, having something out in the parking lot, but things, things change sometimes.
You can hear the sound system outside of the building.
Okay.
Because you've got, particularly given the fact that it's got a good heavy bass with it, that's what you'll hear. You won't be able to tell what the song is, but you can hear the bass. Feel the bass.
Tim, question. The property that this building is located, is it a, is it kind of a L-shaped piece of property? And if so, how, how is that, those, those two lots access, accessible? I don't understand the, the property layout there.
Well, the property for this special use permit is highlighted and hatched in red there. That's the.
Okay, okay. I don't see the black lines there. They're just covered up by the red, correct?
The, the black lines, yes. So this is a separate parcel here.
Okay.
And these are, used to be the old Bristol College parcels down through here. I think the dorm used to sit on this property, if I recall, for Bristol College. It's been many a year ago for that, so I'm trying to recall. But this is the, this is the extent of their property for this development, the hatched red area.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions for staff? All right, how long will it take you to get the developers? And are there any, is there anybody from the public also that needs to address the Planning Commission? We probably ought to have them first in case they raise issues that need to be addressed by the developers.
We have five individuals here. Most of them are associated with the development. Scott Smiles here, Jay Richardson, the property owner, Dan Sharp, property owner, then Michael and Larry Nice. None of them really wanted to talk unless you had questions, and Scott Smile will speak for, since he's the developer, questions, and we can get him on right now. I'll have Steve Blankenship bring him back to the public participation computer, and y'all can ask him some of the questions you asked me, and maybe he can shed some light on those.
Who's coming to the computer?
Scott Smile, the developer, proposed developer, the applicant for the special use permit.
So we don't have anybody from the public, per se, other than the development?
I'm not familiar with the Nice, Michael and Larry Nice, if they're with the development or public, but they did, indicated they didn't want to speak unless, only if they had to speak, so.
Hey, I have got to hop in here. We've got to restart one of our equipments, so we just went off the air just for a second. If we can just pause for just a minute.
Yeah, just let us know when we're back on.
10-4.
Steve, make sure you turn the mic on.
On.
Okay, it's on.
Yep.
Then we had to pause here for Mr. Smile. We had to pause here for a moment because the technology went down, so.
Right when you think you got it.
Every now and then it happens.
I know what you mean.
But Shane's a great, great guy. He has taken care of our many needs through the COVID period on Zooms and other techno, technological issues we have. Usually, it's user-challenged issues, so.
You talking about me there, Tim?
All of us, probably, at some point.
Scott, when we get back on, we're going to ask you to give us your name and address for the record.
I'll do that.
And for the rest of the, rest of time, you'll be on YouTube.
I'm loving this already.
You'll be a star.
My dream come true. Maybe we can all make this a regular thing here. This is kind of fun.
Looks like a sweet project.
Well, it really could be, and if you'll look behind it, I'm not the one that. Well, it, it really could be. And if you look behind it, I'm not the one that thought of it first. I mean, everybody is doing it. And you know, if that casino comes in, we're going to be short housing for a little while.
Okay, Kelly, I'm ready to count you back in.
Thank you so much.
Okay, five, four, three, two, one.
All right, after a little technical situation, we're now back online. And we're still on the, the special use permit for the property behind the former Kmart. And so we have one of the developers that is, they're going to get in front of the camera and talk to us. So if you would give us your name and address, some of the members of planning commission want to ask you a couple of questions.
My name is Scott Smile, 113 Goodson Street, Bristol, Virginia. And I am the guy that dreamed up this project.
All right. Mr. Mayor, I think you had a question.
Yes. All the units itself, Scott, will they be individually metered? Utilities, no sewer, water, electric? The other question would be, are there going to be any facade changes to the building?
There will be facade, there'll be new windows. We're going to try to give it a home look versus the commercial building look. So we're going to do all means, we're going to change the color. Of course, we want to get out with the least expense in the beginning that we can without compromising the facial structure. As far as the sewers, we're going to offer something really unique. We're going to try this experiment because it's worked for me on several of my rental homes. We're going to offer a one price deal where you've get water, internet, cable, electric and everything. We're going to pay for it all. And if, if you see that, I think it's a question of when the casino gets approved, the new people that are going to come in are going to look for a chance to not have to put up a deposit. They're going to be able to just come straight into our place and move in. So yes, we are going to furnish all utilities.
All right, does that answer that question? Margaret, I think you had a question.
Yeah, just curious, a couple of things, I guess, for interior. A couple of places, you talk about eight units and then 10, about one bedroom, about two bedroom. The drawing you have actually has two baths, Joan. I know it's not a final drawing, but just curious for what, what it's going to be looking like.
Well, we would like to have two baths, of course, if the city will allow us. Because if you have two bedrooms, we've actually thrown the idea around of having one bedroom, one great room, and then a living room. Because we feel like we're going to cater to the business person. But whatever the city will let us do and requires us, we are going to follow it to the letter. But yes, we are proposing two bathrooms. We feel like if there's two people that live there, it would make it more appealing to them.
And the other question I asked also was the condition of the parking lot isn't great. So didn't know if, and part of this, we, part of these questions, we don't have purview ever. But just curious for, besides doing some landscaping, but the actual resurfacing or making it.
That is a great one because the greatest point about this building is one of my friends I've known for over 40 years. His name is Wayne Stoffel. He works for one of the premier paving places. And he owes me a favor and I plan on cashing that favor in on the parking lot. The city doesn't require us to do the whole parking lot, but I mean, we have plans to do the entire parking lot. This building has sat empty for over a decade and we're going to make it a positive. And we're going to try to shine it up and make it to where it's a place even you may come and visit and stay if you were visiting Bristol.
Great.
All right. What other questions do we have of the developer?
Scott, what is the, what is the term of the lease? Is it a monthly, six months, year?
We're going to try for a year, but one of the partners, which Larry Nice and Michael Nice are my partners. They're the gentlemen that are in on this project with me. I asked them to come here with us just so they could see what it entails. But we've thrown around six month lease, we've thrown around month, month lease. My philosophy has always been if you don't want to be in my place, give me 30 days and you can move. I don't like to hold people to leases. But on the other hand, I own Volunteer Village right now and it is at 100% occupancy. So, and we've got a five person waiting list right now, ready to get in it. So I do make my places very appealing and my customers want to stay. But once again, if a tenant wanted to leave, even if they had a year lease, we would not pursue and making that lease stand. We would let them out of their lease.
Do we have any other questions? Scott, I certainly hope that you're going to look to BTS as your internet and provider, your various utilities there.
I have about 30 accounts with BTS and my system has been extremely successful. I actually furnish power, water and cable and internet to a lot of my tenants. And it's proven to be very good for me, but absolutely, I love BTS.
Glad to hear that. All right, any other questions? Is there anybody else that wants to address the planning commission on this?
No, Mr. Chairman, we have nobody else that wishes to speak.
Thank you very much. We'll bring you back to, Scott, thank you for talking with us. We'll bring you back to the planning commission and we'll entertain a motion at this time. I'd hate for this to die for a lack of a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve of staff's recommendation.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and we do have a second. We're now open for discussion on the motion that's on the floor, which is to approve staff's recommendation. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Oh, go ahead.
Now, what you got? Jason, you always have something. Go ahead.
I'm good. Just a random thought rattling around in my brain that doesn't need to be uttered, so I'm good.
A little early voting fatigue. Roll call.
Kelly Graham.
Yes.
Malon Luttrell.
Yes.
Joel Staitonis, yes. Jason Boer.
Yes.
Kevin Buck.
Yeah.
Scott Gainer.
Yes.
Takashi.
Yes.
Mark Webb.
Yes.
Margaret Fire Robin.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next up is rezoning of King College Road.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, up for consideration is a request to rezone a piece of property and a little small triangle of property from R three to B one B on King College Road. This would be the applicant Laura Mar Torono. And it says in the city of Bristol because of the little triangle piece that Sheriff Young will discuss. But anyway, wants to put a child clinic in there, a therapy clinic. And with that, I will let Ms. Young give the presentation.
Thank you. So tonight, the rezoning request is focused on 1745 King College Road and 1741 King College Road. And as Mr. Beaver stated, the applicants tonight are Mrs. Laura Mar Torono and City of Bristol. The owners of the property though are Cornerstone Chapel Church. Mr. Walter Flynn is the trustee that's representing the project. And then Mr. Michael Harris. The rezoning, the subject parcels are approximately 2.81 acres and then 0.16 acres. And the current land uses are a vacant church building and then a single family residential home. So we'll look at those in just a minute on the map. The next slide, here we go, shows the map. So the, the parcels hatched in red are what we're going to talk about tonight. And if you look at these, the larger parcel, which Tim, can you run that? Yeah, there we go, is the vacant church building. So this is the, the, the reason we started this rezoning process. We, we received a request to rezone this parcel for a business use of a child counseling center. But when we got to looking at the map, which if you go to the next map, maybe Tim might show it a little bit better. There's a little bit of a, little triangle down here of the parcel next door actually has the R three zoning on it. So the owner of this property, Mr. Harris, is agreeable and okay with rezoning this small triangle as well. So the totality of the rezone is the parcel with the church and then a just triangle of the property next door. So he is, both those people are willing and agreeable to the rezoning request. You can see most of King College Road, at least in this section on this side of the street, has the B one B zoning. So Tim is showing that little corridor has the B one B zone on it already. Across the street, you have some residential zones, R one A and R three. And then back in behind these properties, you have some residential zoning. But the majority of this corridor on that side of the street is zone B one B already. So here are a few photos of the property. The photo on the left is the subject property, former church building. And then the photo to the right is looking at that little corner of the lot that Mr. Harris resides on. So those are the two property photos. The next slide shows the surrounding existing zoning and existing land use, which we just kind of talked about. That you do have quite a bit of, a variety of the R, R zones in this area across the street and back behind this property. So you have some, some R three, some R one A, R two. But you do, like, like we've discussed, have the B one B along that section of King College Road. Existing land uses, should say vacant church building. Here we have multi-family residential and then some single family residential in the area. So the next slide shows just a flavor of what are some of the permitted uses and special use permit uses in the R three zone. So permitted uses include multi-family cemeteries, general farming, parks, private, public utilities, single family developments, home occupations, public libraries, bed and breakfast. And then your special use permit uses include utility buildings, churches, daycare centers, hospitals, philanthropic institutions and clubs, and then some of those sports clubs, private golf, swim, tennis clubs. You also have assisted living facilities that are a special use item in the R three district. B one B expands to include some of the neighborhood commercial type uses that you have to service the neighborhood. So you can have, in addition to single family and duplexes, you have some limited retail trade uses. You have some professional uses. You have some limited healthcare and social assistance uses. You can have full service restaurants in the B one B. There are some repair and maintenance uses that are limited to things like electronics and household goods. And you have a use for religious grant making, civic, professional and similar organizations as a permitted use. The special use permit uses are listed here. I'm not going to read them again because they're the exact same as what's allowed in the R three zone. This slide shows an excerpt from the city's future land use plan. The map shows a little area along the corridor that's kind of a pink with some red marks in it. Yeah, there we go. So this land use classification is a neighborhood commercial designation. So that lines up well with the B one B zone, which allows uses that serve the neighborhood. So the future land use map does support this rezoning request. Also, it lines up with two of the policies that are listed here, so policy three and policy six. And those both speak to encouraging continued growth and redevelopment in strategic areas throughout Bristol's main corridors. And then to encourage redevelopment of buildings that are underutilized. So the future land use plan does support the rezoning request for these, for this property. And we did place public notification signs on the property here announcing the request meeting date, location, and gave our contact number. We did send out property owner, adjacent property owner notification letters. And we did receive two comment letters back. So both were in favor of the rezoning. Those are included in your package. And then I did speak with the property owner that is, he owns the property that's adjacent to the, to the church property. And he is also in favor of the rezoning request. So I spoke to him on the phone, but he is in favor. So both adjacent property owners are in favor of the rezoning request. So due to the adjacent commercial zoning on the adjacent parcel and agreement with the policies in the future land use plan and policy, the staff recommendation to planning commission is to send a favorable recommendation to city council for this request. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you all might have.
Before we get started on that, I want to remind everybody, even though the intended use has been discussed already, we have to, if we're doing a rezone, if we rezone to the, the zone that's being requested and the use is immaterial, you have to look at the totality of everything that's allowed in that zone as you think about whether or not this is a good rezone. Now, any questions of staff?
This, this current property, is it presently on the tax roll?
It, we would have to check the property assessor, but being that it is a church, I would say they have a tax exempt status.
Would that status change if it is going to this potential new business?
As long as they did not qualify for that type of tax exemption. Ms. Smith probably can help me out there from a assessor standpoint a little bit.
No, I, I agree with what you said, Tim. That's, you know, correct.
Chances are it would be on the tax rolls unless they did have their tax exemption.
Okay, just, just a comment. I don't know if this retains this particular property or not. Or maybe, this may not be relevant, but it's not. Tell me as I get started. I had received a phone call probably a week and a half, two weeks ago, or excuse me, it was a text message from an individual that's concerned about a piece of property that was going to be potentially zoned for a sports bar and a club on the King College Road. Now, with what we're seeing here, I don't see that on this particular property, although it could allow for such in the future if it's not developed to what's in front of us. Is that correct?
It could be used for a full service restaurant. Yes.
But isn't, isn't that true of all the surrounding property too?
All the B one Bs can be used.
It can happen on either side of it.
Yeah. That's all I have.
What other questions do we have? Is there anybody from the public that wants to discuss this, Tim?
Yes, we have the trustee for the Cornerstone Chapel, Mr. Flynn, will be speaking here in a moment. Mr. Blankenship will take him to the public participation computer. Also in attendance are Cody Boring and Laura, Mark, Mark. Mark, Mark, I can't, Mark Torano. I'll butcher her name all day long. I'm sorry about that, Laura. But they do not wish to speak only if needed, so.
All right. So we do have somebody that is going to be addressing us?
Yes, Mr. Walter Flynn. He's the trustee of the Cornerstone Chapel, the property owner or the church that's on the property currently. He is the trustee.
All right. Let's get Mr. Flynn up.
You're good, Mr. Chairman. He's good to go.
All right, Mr. Flynn, if you do not mind, please address the planning commission and give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Walter Flynn. My address is twenty one two seventeen Ebony Lane, Abingdon, Virginia.
Thank you, sir. Did you have a statement that you wanted to make to the planning commission?
Yes, I would like to give you a little bit of background and share with you what, for your benefit, why what we believe in God's providence, that this is first of all, is God's property. So we're concerned about God's will and his property. And we believe that this has turned out this way to carry on the work of Cornerstone. A little bit of history about Cornerstone. It was developed, it was the the church group met in King College years ago and purchased the property in nineteen eighty nine. At that time, they were an interdenominational church. One fortunate thing happened that the pastor contracted cancer and and had to leave the church and subsequently died. And so the church sort of dwindled down and had to restart their efforts. They brought in a pastor and actually reconstituted the church and had a very vibrant ministry there. Unfortunately, we lost the pastor again. We were back in that state. And the people didn't feel like that it was, it was such an effort because most churches of this Baptist orientation are smaller churches, and it would have been another struggle for them to to try to carry on the church as opposed to just disband to other churches. I came to the church in two thousand and nine. And since that time, it's been my privilege to be the caretaker of the property as well as part of the ministry. Children have been very special to us as a church and training them. And I had the privilege of of conducting sessions with them during the week. On Sunday, we would have them in Sunday school to teach them God's word in his Bible and during the week. I used the opportunity to put that into practice. And we did this through the use of the grounds and the property as well as just teaching character based. And the reason I'm telling you this is that working with children isn't always effective in a room. Out doing something that interests them and puts them in a natural setting is very important. So we were delighted when we had the opportunity to see this property being repurposed as a children's counseling center for that use. The property does have two point seven acres. It does give some use of the property for a very unique opportunity for a counseling center that most other locations would not provide. And I think this would be an asset to the community and a continuation of what has been so important to the church.
We appreciate that. Is there any questions of Mr. Flynn?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Curious about the ownership of the property. Will that be transferred to a new group or to a new association? Or how does that handle?
No, we, we I've been elected trustee of the property. And I I've been authorized by our Board of Elders to enter a contract with the counseling center and to transfer the property to them.
Thank you.
That is, that is consistent with our bylaws and the Tennessee code.
Okay, so then to answer Dr. Webb's question, it is going to be sold then?
Yes, we have, we are under contract.
Very good. Is there going to be any aspect of child daycare?
Not to my knowledge, there was another party interested in the property and they also applied to you for a permit. We had not come to a contract with them. And so they have, they no longer have an interest in the property. I think this, this is also unique in the sense that we're very delighted to see this property be repurposed. And it appears to be in your interest to do the rezoning for that area so that it would accommodate that.
All right. Any other questions? All right, now, Mr. Mr. Flynn, we're going to thank you very much for appearing in front of us. Mr. Beavers, I assume there's nobody else to address us?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
All right, then we'll bring it back for a motion.
I moved to approve.
I missed it. Was that Scott?
Yeah, that was me. Sorry, that was Scott.
All right, and the second is from?
Kevin will second.
Kevin is the second. You know, we didn't get into the discussion. Is Mr. Flynn still around?
He is back in the conference room.
Can he hear us?
Uh, I would assume that he's back in there. Yes, sir.
Dr. Webb, if you would explain the rezoning process.
Mr. Flynn, the planning commission does not rezone. We make recommendations to the city council about the rezoning request. It will go from here, the the vote will go from here on to city council, and they have the final approval.
And so that would be in front, assuming that, well, if he gets a favorable recommendation, well, he gets either recommendation. It goes in front of city council at their meeting next month for first reading consideration. That being said, we've got a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? The the motion is to accept staff's recommendation. Roll call.
Kelly Graham.
Yes.
Malin Luttrell.
Yes.
Joel stating this, yes. Jason Boer.
Yes.
Kevin Buck. Kevin. Thank you. Scott Gayner.
Yes.
Takai.
Yes.
Thank you. Mark Webb.
Absolutely.
Margaret Fire Robin.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. We appreciate it. Next up on the agenda is preliminary and final plat.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, up for consideration is a subdivision plat for the Cox Airs property. Applicants Rick Morrow and Shane, if you can promote Mr. Morrow to a panelist from the attendee, that would be appreciated. He is via Zoom with us tonight. And if you recall, this property was before planning commission for the Dollar Tree and Medical Clinic on it out off Ajaro Drive. And this is a subdivision associated with that development. So with that, I'll let Ms. Young give the presentation.
Thank you. We, this one will look very familiar to you all as we just reviewed the concept plan for this project just a couple of months ago. But the the request here is for a preliminary and final plat approval for approximately four point six four acres of property that's located at Highway three ninety four in Ajaro Drive. And the property is zone B three. If you go to the next slide, Tim, this shows the property where the Dollar Tree and Fastpass Health Clinic was approved, the concept plan was approved, just a few planning commission meetings ago. The next slide. This shows the overall view of the plat. And then if you zoom in, or I'm sorry, next slide will show a zoom in of what they're proposing to do. So they will create three lots here. One, Lot one, one point six seven acres, Lot two, point seven six acres, and then Lot three. I think that one's two point two one acres. So this will have a three lot subdivision here at the corner of Highway three ninety four in Ajaro Drive. And we'll talk just a little bit about the criteria for the plat approval on the, starting on the next slide. And there are water and sanitary sewer services that are available, electric service is available. The proposed lots do meet the lot size requirements and density requirements of the zoning ordinance. Staff reviewed the plat and it does meet the requirements of the subdivision regulations. And then as far as ingress and egress goes, access is provided off of Ajaro Drive. And there is an internal cross access easement that's proposed across the front and rear of lots one and two so that Lot three does have access to Ajaro Drive. And the staff recommendation tonight is for the Bristol Municipal Regional Planning Commission to grant preliminary and final approval for this plat, the Cox Airs and RC, R and C Enterprises subdivision plat. Noting conformance to the subdivision regulations as well as the Bristol, Tennessee zoning ordinance. I'm happy to answer any questions. And then we have Mr. Rick Morrow on the electronic call that can answer anything. He is the developer of the project to you all met a couple meetings ago when the concept plan for the Dollar Tree and Fastpass Health Clinic was approved.
Questions of staff?
I have a question. The southern part of the lot line there that that joins three ninety four, is that no man's land right there?
This is Rick Morrow. Yes, sir, it it pretty much is. It apparently was related to some some topography issues, drainage issues when when the state did that. That's the estate property line back in there and and we've talked to them. But there's really no nothing from the state as far as being willing to do that.
Who, who, who would maintain that? That's right in front of your property there. I could see that could be, you know, a maintenance issue.
Yes, sir. Well, I could say it's it's state property, so we, there's nothing really we we can do with it. You know, the the state obviously is responsible for maintaining their right of ways, but you know, sometimes they don't do a real good job with it, but
I was going to say that, that, I hope that doesn't harm your your businesses in there.
We certainly hope not also. We're, we were concerned about it and did inquire about, you know, a transfer of that ownership and straightening out the property line. But I think that's going to take an act of Congress from what we saw.
I understand.
Rick, if you don't mind, for the record, give us your name and address, please.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry. Rick Morrow, nine oh one West Main Street, Owenwald, Tennessee.
Thank you, sir. All right. Any additional questions for staff? Any additional questions for Mr. Morrow? You're making it easy. All right. Is there a motion?
I saw move, we accept staff's recommendation on this subdivision.
Is there a second? Who seconded?
Margaret.
Margaret, we have a motion and a second to accept staff's recommendation is on the floor. Is there any discussion on said motion? Roll call.
Kelly Graham.
Yes.
Malin Luttrell.
Yes.
Joel stating this, yes. Jason Boer.
Yes.
Scott, Kevin Buck?
Yes.
Scott Gayner?
Yes.
Takai Shu?
Yes.
Mark Webb?
Yes.
Margaret Fire Robin.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Next up, right of way abandonment. Do we? Is Metzger in the house?
Oh, Mr. Metzger's off for a couple of days, so you have to put up with me tonight instead of David. He misses it and he misses where he can draw on the board, so. Drive him a little crazy on Zoom since he can't sketch real easily on there. But up for consideration, Mr. Chairman, is a right of way abandonment for Leona Street. Leona Street's off East State, you can see Georgia Avenue. If I can get my pointer, but Georgia Avenue is in this intersections here. Leona Street would be the next intersection to the east. Currently, Leona comes down, makes a ninety degree bend, the actual open part of the road where there's a city street. This portion highlighted in yellow is an unopened right of way. So it is a platted right of way that does not have a city street on it. Mr. Kenneth Dunn owns both properties adjacent to that right of way. And he has requested that the city abandon this portion of the right of way so he can construct a home in that area and meet setback requirements. He's going to build a home on these properties spanning several, the other two properties. This map is just a more of a schematic of that. The only comment we had back from a review from BTS and utility companies and staff was BTS does have a transmission line across the front of the property here and wish to retain a fifteen foot utility easement across this front portion of the property here, the southern portion. This is a photo where the dozer setting is where that right of way, unopened right of way is. You can see the transmit, the line up top of the phone line. That's obviously not electrical line up there, Joel, so. But the phone line. So, but anyway, this is the portion that is requesting being abandoned. Staff, like I said, has reviewed it, have spoken with utility companies and would recommend the planning commission send a favorable recommendation to the city council for abandonment of the Leona Street right of way. And including the provision of retaining a fifteen foot utility easement along the southern portion of the abandonment. Should the planning commission pass out a favorable recommendation, this will be placed on city council's November tenth meeting. They did move the council meeting to November tenth. It will be placed on the November tenth meeting under a resolution for abandonment. If y'all have any questions, I'll try my best to answer them.
Tim, that old water tank that's there close to it is, will that be coming down or is it going to remain as is?
Let me get that picture up. There is an old water tank. You can see the edge of it right here. That's private and that used to go be part of the tanning factory's fire suppression system a long time ago at the turn of the early nineteen hundreds. So So, uh, Mr. Dunn does own that. Uh, I think my understanding is he will be removing that. Out of the, uh, property. But that is, like I said, early nineteen hundreds served the, uh, tanning factory that used to slaughter, uh, tanning factory down in there.
Good.
Any other questions? Is all of this property in Tennessee?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Um, do we have anybody that's going to address us?
No, sir. There are no further public participants tonight.
And you say he's going to build a, a private residence on that property, Tim?
Yes, sir. He owns the bigger piece. And let me get my pointer started. I don't know if this slide or. But he owns this bigger piece and the landscaping company that operates out of it. And he's going to build his residence up here in this area. So he will be doing a recombination plat should the right of way be abandoned and, uh, put his residence up in this area.
Is there a motion?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the, um, abandonment right of way as discussed.
Uh, second.
I'm going to assume that motion is to accept staff's recommendation as printed out in our.
Handout. Yes, absolutely.
All right. Is there any discussion, um, on the, um, motion? Roll call.
Kelly Graham.
Yes.
Malin Luttrell.
Yes.
Joel stating is yes. Jason Boer.
Yes.
Kevin Buck?
Yes.
Scott Gaynor?
Yes.
Takashi?
Yes.
Mark Webb? Mark?
Yes.
Thank you. Margaret Fire Robin?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. The next item up on the Metzger agenda is a street name change.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Up next is a private street name change of Center Drive. This, uh, private street is located off Highway three ninety-four. Uh, the center, it used to be the Elks Lodge at one time, I think, uh, years ago, but, uh, South Highway four twenty-one. And, uh, you can see it's just Center Drive right now. The request is to change it from Center Drive to Crest Point Drive from the, uh, uh, Electric Motor has made that request. And one reason they have made the request is the new Center Point seventy-four development. Which is when Island Road gets relocated out off, uh, eleven W. Which is to name that road instead of Island Road Northeast to name it, uh, Center Point. Uh, drive out there. So, but couldn't have two center drives and a center point drive in the same location. The, uh, Electric Motor determined that they like Crest Point Drive out there since this is no longer the center as. Used to be a meeting place you could rent. And they agreed to, uh, change their name to Crest Point Drive. But once again, should you all, uh, uh, choose to make a recommendation, a favorable recommendation to city council on the private road name change. This will go to city council at their, uh, November tenth meeting for changing the name with an effective date of December thirty-first, twenty twenty. And the reason this late update after, uh, approval of a resolution would be to allow. The, uh, business that is in operation out there to, uh, change their address, get their address changed. So. Gives them time to get all that taken care of before the name change becomes effective. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Questions? Anybody from the public?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Motion.
Move to approve, take staff recommendation for the name change from, uh, Center. Drive to Crest Point Drive.
Thank you, ma'am.
Second.
We have a motion and we do have a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? It's on the floor. Roll call.
Kelly Graham.
Yes.
Malin Luttrell.
Yes.
Joel stating is yes. Jason Boer.
Yes.
Mark Webb?
Yes.
Kevin Buck?
Yes.
Scott Gaynor?
Yes.
Takashi?
Yes.
Margaret Fire Robin?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Margaret. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Other matters, city council update.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. At the last city council meeting earlier this month. Uh, city council did approve on second reading after having a public hearing. The, uh, rezoning of the, uh, Old Sunset Motel property, a portion of it from, uh, R three to B three. That, uh, would become effective the twenty-third. So it would be Friday that rezoning will become effective. And that is all for the, uh, city council update.
Thank you, sir. Uh, next up is the discussion of the RE district.
Yes, Mr. Council, or Mr. Mr. Chairman. Mr. Councilman, Mr. Chairman, uh, up is a continued discussion of RE district draft. Uh, staff did go and look at that and make changes prior to our last planning commission meeting. Uh, it is in what we'll call a, not a final version, but the final draft. There's a couple of items we still would like some clarification to make sure you all are comfortable with before we. Create the final, uh, language in the ordinance update. So with that, I'll let Ms. Young give the, uh, presentation.
All right. Thank you, um, Tim. So. We, uh, staff has held quite a few little, um, sessions on how to try to, uh, attack this RE district. Um, based on your all's feedback during the last meeting and work session. And so what we have produced for you all to look at tonight is, um, just trying to kind of narrow down. It's definitely in a draft format, but try to narrow down on some of these points we've discussed. To, um, get this to a clean and concise, um, regulation. So what I have tonight is just a couple of screens and this is the red line copy of the changes we came up with. Um, that I'd like to walk through and just get your input and have you tell us, um, where we still need to do some work before we would bring this back to you in a format and ask you to make, uh, any kind of recommendation on it. So this, uh, what we'll walk through is the entirety of this RE section and I'll, we'll just show you where we've, um, made some changes and then some things are just really clean up. We tried to, while we've got this thing open, tried to, um, do as much cleanup as we could on it, um, to make it more concise. So, um, we'll start. With this section A, which is the purpose section we discussed so much during that last, um, work session and meeting. And so what we, what we did is really just struck through this first paragraph that was kind of giving us some. Um, pause over what certain terms meant, meant. Um, and really just tried to write it concisely to say. That the intent of this district is to preserve the development patterns of existing neighborhoods that meet the following criteria or conditions. So that is a new sentence that just tries to, um, straightforwardly set out that this. District is to preserve the development patterns of existing neighborhoods that meet the following criteria or conditions. The A, B, and C underneath are that is the criteria that's existing in the ordinance now. So this is the criteria. That they use to help determine and draw boundaries around what would be the two RE districts that we have. So, um, A, we just really chose to use the term lots rather than parcels. So. At least eight, five percent of the lots developed prior to nineteen fifty. B, we say that the district shall contain at least one full block length. Or ten lots lined within three hundred feet of each other. And then we add this phrase that says unless contiguous with an existing RE district. And the purpose of that phrase would be if ever, um, there was consideration to expand the existing RE district. And we have no, um, there's no active talk to do that. No one's actively presented that to us, but just in the instance that that could ever happen. That phrase would allow that, um, those districts to be expanded. And then C just says that a majority of the developed lots are less than seventy-five hundred square feet. That exists in the, um, ordinance now. So then the final sentence in that section ties back to the first, which says that. The intent of the district is to preserve the development patterns. So we wanted to say. Um, you know, we, or we don't want anyone to say, what do you mean by development patterns? Well. The term development patterns for the purpose of the RE district is defined as lot size, building placement regulations, lot coverage. Building height and orientation pattern. And those are the elements that are further laid out in the ordinance below. So how does everybody feel about that big first purpose section?
Does that orientation pattern address the, 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 the problem we have now going on?
I believe it does.
That would address that. Okay.
Right. And we'll go through that section here in just a minute as we work our way through. Um. But for the purpose of development patterns, that's what we're talking about.
Okay.
Yes, the, the terms you see in this sentence for the definition. Are defined further below on the next page. You'll see those headings. Uh, building placement regulations, lock coverage, building height and orientation pattern. So. When you get down to the next pages, you will see those terms. And we were trying to be consistent with what's in the regulation using those terms. So there couldn't be a mistake to interpret differently. And the biggest thing on this, uh, if everybody, is everybody comfortable with that? I mean, that seems to be concise, more concise.
Well, I, I, I have a comment about this new preamble. I mean, that's completely different than the original. You know, the original wasn't to preserve anything. It was just to make. The, the zoning or this area, these areas that were not uniform because there was no zoning. To make them a classification without saying, okay, anything that comes after this. Uh, or if anything gets built or changed has to suddenly conform. Um, a- and. So, uh, I mean, that, that's different. Um, the other thing I have a little bit of reservation on is this use of the word preserve. You know, the, these are usually in these historic districts. And I, I think people will interpret that as, well, see, look, you said preserve, nothing can change. Everything's got to stay the same. You know, I, I just, um, you know, you gotta use the same building materials, all that stuff. And, um, I just, I just think that. Is, is very different than the original purpose of the RE district.
Mr. Beavers, is the term development patterns defined? You said it was defined later on.
Uh, the term development pattern is down here at the bottom. The term development pattern for the purposes of our district is defined as lot size. Building placement regulations. And those are in the pages down below, the items down below. So each of these term, lot size, building placement, lot coverage, building height and orientation pattern. Are down in the regulation below on the next pages. So there's. A clear tieback to this definition of here are the, here's what we mean by development pattern.
Well, considering the, uh, the fact that there are some definitions for the terms that. Are included in the, the definition or the description of development patterns. Uh, having the opportunity to look at those shortly would, would make my, uh, conclusion on what you, what staff has worked on. It's much more definitive. It's less ambiguous and it gets right to the point. And I have no problem with the change.
And we can, uh, move down to the, the biggest question, and she hasn't touched on it yet, and I'm sort of stealing Sheriff's thunder here, but. All our, uh, I think Sheriff, if I'm saying this right, all our R one, R two, RE. Have these special use permits allowed in those zones? And our question to you all, we haven't really talked about this as planning commission, but. Are you all comfortable leaving those as special use permits, all those uses in the RE? Like, or do you want to take something out or add something? I mean. The one we seem to talk about lots is private swim, golf, swimming, tennis and sports clubs. Um, that's my bigger question for you all on this slide right now is to. From a special use permit standpoint, are y'all still comfortable leaving those in the RE zone? Uh, that's how all the other residential zones have those, the single families duplex.
I, I personally, uh, like those, um, because any residential area would, would benefit from, from those types of, of establishments. I, I would think.
Other thoughts?
I, I, I think the, I, I think the, the, those, the golf, swimming, tennis, similar sports clubs. I mean, that, that would severely change the character of these neighborhoods. I mean, all these lots are, are small, right? Um, you know, they're less than seventy-five hundred square feet. So. I'm not sure how you have a golf course with seventy-five hundred square feet. Um, unless you buy up dozens of lots, which like I said, will change the, the character of the, the neighborhood significantly. Same with swimming or a tennis club. I mean, you can put a tennis, a couple of tennis courts maybe on, on one parcel, but that's it. Um.
Other members' thoughts?
So along those lines, um, for if we wanted to add pocket parks or small parks, would those need to be? Special use permit or if they were, um, and I guess looking whether they could be, uh, public or private. Do they need to be permitted?
Well, I think if they were parks like the true sense, there are green space associated with the development. I don't. Danielle, you can help me out here, but I don't think that would be something we'd have to call out specifically, would it?
I don't believe that we call out parks as a use. I could be mistaken, but I don't know that that's something that we'd have by special use permit anywhere in the ordinance. It's just. And you fall back on the idea that the sovereign can do what it wants. And for the most part, so if the city says, we're going to put a park in here. A pocket park, then it acquires the property, it becomes a pocket park. Okay.
Yes, I agree.
Yeah, I see, I see a situation over here next to Anderson School where a lot that had a house on it, um, was torn down. And I think, uh, Civitan Club put in a basketball court, you know, on that lot. This, this could happen, correct? Say next to, to the Fairmount Elementary School, if somebody donated a lot. A, a park could go in there or a tennis court or a, or basketball, uh, uh, goal, couple of basketball goals. Is that, is that correct?
Uh, Danielle, you want to, if it's a private, I think if it was something private, it would have.
No, not private. I think like the Civitan Club donated, you know.
They donated the land to the city, I think, that wanted Anderson.
Yeah.
Now that I've, now that I've looked, I've misspoke earlier when I said that public parks aren't really addressed. What actually, the way the zoning ordinance handles that is public parks are permitted. Um, in all zones except this one oddly, because the way that it works is that if you look at the RM zone. Um, those are permitted uses, public parks in the RM zone. And I think Sheriff and Tim can correct and come wrong, but most of the other residential zones then fall back on that RM district and say, any, any use that's permitted in RM is also permitted in this residential zone, but the RE district does not do that. It is different. And so that may be something that we want to address. If we want to allow for public parks, we want to specifically allow for public parks.
Yes, I would suggest if we want to allow for public parks, to put it under B permitted uses.
Yeah, I was going to ask, how did the Rotary Field project, how did that play into this? I mean, was it because it was already there or, or would it play into it?
Rotary Field, not in this district, so it's not in the RE zone. I don't believe, Sheriff, is it the softball field?
I believe so.
And if it was, it was developed prior to the, it's the, the adoption of the RE zone.
Okay.
So, but if, is everybody comfortable with putting public parks in the, under B? A nod, thumbs up, something?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Now going back to the special use permits. Is everybody comfortable with taking out private golf, swimming, tennis and similar sports clubs? Nods, thumbs up, something I can see?
Yes.
Are we talking, are we talking about private, uh, tennis courts?
Yes.
All this private?
Sports club, private clubs.
Okay.
Not like if a resident wanted to go out and put their own tennis court in.
Or, or what we just talked about, a, a park with a tennis court in it?
That would be a public park. You could put that in, yes.
Okay, we're talking about private everything here on.
Yeah, it would be a club, a sports club, a private club. Okay, we'll take that out of special use. Is everybody, how about the institutions, philanthropic institutions in clubs?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, leave that in. Daycare centers leave in. Everybody nods, thumbs, something?
Yeah.
Okay. Churches, I assume everybody's happy with that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. And then obviously the utilities. There's not many private utilities, but obviously those are statements typically in all our zones about the public or private utilities. Okay, so what I have on special use is to take out number five. And then on the number B is add, uh, public parks. Okay, now we'll go Jason. This will help you out when we get down in here some more than everybody else. There you go.
But, hold on, I, I didn't, I didn't get really an answer of why we're changing this purpose. Cause that purpose is not what was there. It's totally different.
We were trying to make it where there's not any question of what it means by defining development pattern. As you'll see in the next slide, as down in the, further in the slides here. So in other words, there's nothing like, before there wasn't any definition to characteristic or or this things that are hatched out of there. There wasn't patterns, character, there wasn't any of that defined. So what we did when we looked at it, we tried to come up with a term and just use development patterns as that term because that's typically.
Yeah, but that, that's, that's not my, I mean, I understand that, but the original point was to accommodate a diversity of land development and, and setbacks and everything else. That, that's different than preserve. I mean, accommodate. I, I mean, it's, it's like, I mean, you're trying to take a hodgepodge of different things and say, okay, this zoning ordinance covers these things because they're all different. And, and now we're saying, well, now we want to preserve this. I, I mean, that's a very different statement. And, you know, I, I know I'm being a little pandantic about it, but, you know, we, we saw what happened when it went to the zoning board. You know, and, and they interpreted it however they wanted and this is a quote historic district. And I'm afraid that people will see that word preserve and ignore everything else and say, well, no, it's got to be exactly how it was.
So Scott, I think, I mean, personally, I don't agree with you. I think it was, the original purpose was to preserve the character of the neighborhood. I don't have a problem using the terminology preserve. So.
Well, I'm reading the text above it. I mean, it doesn't say anything about preserve. It says to accommodate those homes that were developed prior to nineteen fifty.
Tim, can we see the terminology defined as you were getting ready to go to? I think that would help.
Yeah.
Eliminate the subject.
We'll run on down through the terminology. Okay, Sheriff, there's the next slide.
Okay, so I'll just speak to the, to the red lines, but the section D is really just a cleanup. You have a lot of words here to say existing language to say essentially what we've just crossed. We've crossed out to say one single family detached unit or one duplex is permitted per lot. So from a residential lot development, that's what you can do here. So we felt that in kind of the way that this number one is laid out, you could say it in less words. So it's saying one single family detached unit or one duplex is permitted per lot. This is really a cleanup item. Number three down here though, is where you get to some of the issues we've discussed. And this is going to talk about residential orientation pattern. And residential orientation pattern is one of those items that's listed as a development pattern in that defining statement in the purpose section. So residential orientation pattern is one of those items. And so this is trying to address dress the, how the structure faces the street. So it's going to say, structure orientation. For new structures and front yard additions, the residential front facade shall face the street. The residential front facade shall have an entryway. Oh, oh.
Well, I'll just go on down through here and we can.
Okay. Okay. And then we're going to eliminate the heading setbacks and we're going to say, here are your building placement regulations. And we're going to say you have a front yard build two range. So the front yard build two range is determined by the nearest adjacent existing structure on the same side of the street oriented towards the same public street. New homes and front yard additions can have a build two range that is. And there's two diagrams that we'll look at here, but this is talking about a new, a new construction, new home or front yard addition has this range that it can be built no less than the adjacent residential front facade referenced in comparison to the street. So no closer to this existing residential structure on the right, if you look at the diagram. So if you're, if your neighbor's built here, this establishes your front minimum. So that's, or I guess that's the, yeah, that'd be the minimum, uh, front yard build two line. And then this section B says you can't build no greater than the reference residential front facade referenced in comparison to no greater than the reference residential front facade referenced in comparison to the street. So no greater. So if you have a home where Tim's got the pointer right now, sitting back this far, your new construction needs to go somewhere in the, between the two of these. Or it can match.
Once again, we, we can come back and speak to these. I just think going for everybody.
Okay, so this section says, this addresses corner lots. So if you are on a corner lot, corner lots will reference the most adjacent residential front facade on the same side of the street oriented towards the same public street. But you can deviate five feet from it. Um, the rest of this section and talking about minimum side yard, minimum rear yard is just a cleanup. So we say minimum side yard setbacks, minimum side yard setback shall be five feet. Minimum rear yard setback shall be thirty feet. And then section F just cleans up. It just says uncovered porches and step setback exceptions. They can encroach past the front building facade, the average encroachment distance of uncovered steps or porches is determined by those lot, those on lots within three hundred feet either direction of the subject property. Then you go to lot coverage, which we left the same. Building height, we left the same really, but we nixed that very last couple of words, which says whichever is less, just because we felt that it was confusing. So this says now building height. The peak of any roof shall not exceed thirty-five feet and the height of the principal building at the average grade of the front facade may not exceed two full stories in one attic or half story within a gable or hip roof. And then finally, section seven is talking about duplex unit parking. And this is when we really just wanted to get a feel how you all would see this. This, this section contains a duplication of some of the language that's in the parking regulations section. So we would advise uh, striking A, B and C as a duplication. And then if you look at the new A, which is parking is to be placed in the rear of the structure and may not be placed in the front of the side, front or the side of the structure. We would ask if you all still feel that that's valid, we should still include that. So is it important to say that if it's a duplex in this RE zone, parking is to be placed in the rear of the structure? Should we keep that? Or is that still important to the planning commission? And then this additional strike through, which says driveway entry shall be at least eleven feet in width. This section was actually, actually predates our access standards. And the access standards now provide minimum and maximums for both residential and commercial uses. So does it make sense to have something additional for duplex unit parking in this section, which states that a driveway entrance shall be at least eleven feet when we have it addressed in another section of the zoning ordinance? Excuse me. So those are a couple of questions on parking that are, are mainly cleanup items. But the, the big question to the planning commission is do you feel that it's essential for a duplex to have parking in the rear of the structure?
So that would be the section, and I hope that when you go back up to here and look at the term development pattern clarifies. Now we can scroll back down and talk through each of those, but that's how we wanted to set it up is here's the development pattern, here's what development pattern means. And it means what's down in the ordinance below the rest of it, those sections. Uh, once again, not asking to discuss those sections necessarily yet. Uh, but does everybody feel comfortable? And would people feel more comfortable with Scott's point of preserve to use accommodate there instead of preserve? I mean, that's a, you could put the accommodate there. If everybody felt more comfortable using that than preserve, but how does everybody feel about this? I'm pointing to my screen with my hand like y'all can see me here. But how does everybody feel about this? You know, just once again, what we tried to do is say, here are development patterns are these and those topics are what are shown below.
When I, when I became a member of the planning commission, this was the issue that I dove headfirst into. Uh, not knowing that much about, uh, planning and zoning per se, but I do know quite a deal about technical language. And when I look at the current language of this section, I see a lot of ambiguity. I see the reason for the problem that developed. And the work that staff has done. Um, and I'm fine with preserve or accommodate, either word there personally. But the work that staff has done, I know this is not easy work. I know it takes a lot of thought, takes a lot of research. And I commend you for that work and I think it clears up the ambiguity. It is the reason or the impetus behind why we, why we started down this road. And I think you, you've put it where it needs to be with the conciseness that's warranted.
Tim, I, I've only got one thought. When, when we start talking like new houses or new whatever, can can somebody come in that's putting a used unit on the site, claim well, it's not a new unit. It's, it's a used unit, so I don't have to go by this? I mean, I, I know that may sound silly, but you know how people are.
We can look at that, Danielle. You know, I guess our thought is it's new to this zone, it's zoned a lot and not necessarily a new structure. But we could.
That's the, you could turn around and say, well, it's not a new structure. It's a used structure that I'm pulling in.
I, I think that what we talk about with development is when you put a new structure, a, a new to the lot structure, because that's when you would require a site plan. Regardless of whether you're moving the structure from somewhere else, because I guess a similar example would be one of the rebuilt, one of the houses that they've built down at the Speedway and moved into place.
Right.
Tim, those we've required a site plan for, have we not?
Well, they, all residential has to have a plot sketch.
That's something that we can review to make sure that it meets all of the requirements of the zoning ordinance. And so
Right.
A structure constructed elsewhere, whether it's in a factory or you know, at the Speedway is going to have to go through that same process.
Okay, I, I was, I was just covering bases here.
Right.
To Scott's point, I think there is an implication to using the word preserve rather than accommodate. Uh, insofar as if someone goes into an established block and builds a steel and glass house that meets all of the other, all of the other requirements. Someone's going to bring up, well, that doesn't look like ours. We're not preserving the neighborhood. And apparently the zoning board may pick up on that. I think accommodating, uh, would be a lot more, uh, lot less likely to be abused in that way.
Is everybody good with accommodate? Thumbs shake, something?
Yes.
Using.
Sure, yes.
Okay, looks like the majority of people will change that to accommodate. Then everybody, besides that, is everybody comfortable with this section knowing? And we'll start talking down below the next sections to make sure, but to see the intent of what we did was to, you know, development patterns, here's what they mean. Everybody comfortable? Looks, nods, thumbs, something? Okay.
Yeah, I think it simplifies it.
Okay, great. Now let's talk, um, uh, the one, I guess Sheriff and I would point out on this, the first one, number one's just a cleanup of the language. There was no need to have two A and B there when it could be covered under one sentence. And we didn't, we haven't really talked about the residential lot sizes, but we did not propose any changes unless somebody wants to change something there. These are typical of what we have seen out there and looking at the majority of the lots. Uh, this one, just make sure people are comfortable with this, uh, what we're calling the residential orientation pattern. Uh, the residential front facade shall face the street. And the residential front facade shall have an entryway. I mean, that's and then there was a definition, Danielle, that we were going to put in for front facade, I believe, that we didn't show.
I thought we had it and it may have gotten lost in a, a revision. Um, but I'll see if I can find it in the previous draft.
As I recall, that was a circular argument, that the residential front facade is the facade that is in the front.
Yeah, we, we worked pretty hard on that definition, Kevin. Yeah, we worked pretty hard on that definition, Kevin.
Why we took it out of this version, Danielle, is because the definition was really this right here, just like Kevin said, it was sort of circular argument. So, but is everybody comfortable with that?
I think that can be abused by someone who wants to claim that, that, that the front of the house is on the side.
Okay.
If there's, if there's not a distinguishing characteristic.
Right.
Other than entryway, then just say that, the entryway is on the front.
Well, we'll go back and look at that definition that we had before. It was, like I said, you look at it so many times, the staff, you cut out things and add it, but we'll go back and look at that to clarify. That, but in general, what we want to say, staff's intent would be the front facade is the facade that faces the street. I mean, that's just that simple. And then the front facade shall have an entryway. I mean, that's
I, I think that's clean.
Yeah, that's what our intent is. If everybody's comfortable with that, we'll make that happen.
Is it, I, I was, but, but rather than saying the residential front facade shall face the street, the residential front facade is the one that faces the street.
We had a definition. I, I think, I really think it got cut out, but what we had it was the residential front facade is defined as the face of the residential structure facing a city street.
Yeah, we'll go back and clean this up if everybody's comfortable with those two being your orientation pattern.
Well, there's a typo on two.
Yeah. And, and
Should say and way instead of and.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I'm glad, I'm trying to read it real quick. As well, Danielle says it and Sheriff, we've got it.
And Tim, my question is on the residential orientation pattern. How would it handle rebuilt structures?
We'll add that in for renovation. Well, well, I guess that's the front yard addition. So, I mean, that's what within tent was, the front yard addition would be your renovations if you expanded.
That's, and I just did, I wanted to get some clarification on something that's either destroyed by fire or something that was rebuilt, but
Right. Oh, for rebuilds?
Yes.
They'd have to meet these requirements, wouldn't they, Danielle?
Yeah, unless you put it, unless you built in an exception for a structure that like in the case of a structure that was destroyed by fire, if you want to be able to rebuild it to the same, in the same orientation that it was previously in, we could create an exception for something like that.
And the question I'd have if we did that would be, would you put a timeframe on that rebuild?
I would. I don't know what it would be yet, we can talk about that, but
We'll talk through it. But we can do that, Takai, we can look at putting something in there about that to clarify.
That's cool.
I gotta comment about the corner lot. Says facing the street is the majority of the homes on the block. Well, which block? You got two streets. Yeah, I, I think, uh, cause
We'll fix it. But Tim
Yeah, you, you, you follow what I'm saying?
Yeah, we'll fix it.
Yeah, I mean, it might just be simpler to say that, you know, faces the street, ate one of the streets.
We'll fix it because we looked at that on a couple of different instances on some corner lot, how they face. But we'll clarify that better.
Yeah, because I, I know there are some, some houses that, you know, that they just for what, you know, they, they don't follow what you would think would be the main street, but they turn to the other one. And, you know, it just put, suddenly they become non-conforming, right?
Correct.
Obviously grandfathered, but yeah, okay.
We'll clean that up. All right. Moving on, now what staff did, we, this topic setbacks will be our, and we talked about this last time, staff went back and we looked at the RE zones. And we'd ask about anomalies. There were three anomalies and really they were in the Windsor Avenue weed and seed area. At fourteen ten Anderson Street, there was a home that set back much further than the other homes on the street. But it was built in nineteen forty, so it was built at the same time the other homes were built. So I don't know how you can call it an anomaly, because it was constructed in that same timeframe as the other homes that are adjacent to it. Then we had one at nine twenty-five Wilson Avenue, and it was similar, it was built in nineteen fifty-two. So once again, you're back in that same timeframe as that development of that neighborhood. And then the only more recent anomalies, eleven twenty Shelby Street. And that home was built in nineteen seventy-four, so we really have no recent anomalies. So our intent with this and writing the reg this way was if you had an anomaly, say this was one of the old anomalies, this structure right here. Because it set back the furthest, then if that was your build to range. You know, you could, as a property owner, soften that anomaly. I wouldn't say it's hard to call it anomaly when it was developed at the time the others were. It just, they felt they wanted to build it back there and there was no regulations that said otherwise, but it's the same timeframe of home. But like I said, there's only those three instances, so everything else, you have a neighbor. And we said the easiest from a regulatory standpoint is to go look at the home, most adjacent home to you, the closest home to you on both sides. And say you can build no closer than the closest one to the road. Or, or to the front yard line, or no further than the furthest one closest to you. And that gives you a built to range, and that is very easy for anybody to go out there and determine fairly quickly. Versus average setback lines and, because, I mean, just to us, this made the most sense. One, because there are only the three homes that were built back further than you would call a typical pattern at that time, but it's hard to say why they did that, but it was allowed. So there were only those three instances, there were none in the Fairmount area that we could see. There's some on Taylor Street that set back further than some of others. But if you look at them, they're sort of do this, like you might have one here and then the next one's halfway and then the next one's back further. So it's not a drastic jump back to them. But we felt this was the most enforceable from a staff standpoint and easiest for us to go and tell somebody and explain to them when they call up and ask, what's my setback? To, to call that the build to range. And so that's why we proposed it. I mean, we went everything, we beat the, this issue for hours and hours and hours trying to look at different scenarios, but from an enforceability standpoint. And just because, once again, you have those three structures, it's all that's in here in these zones currently RE that set back further than, way further than the other homes in these districts. And two of them were built in the same timeframe back in the forties and early fifties, nineteen forty and nineteen fifty-two. And I'd have to say the seventy-four while built earlier, that's still, it's not yesterday, so seventy-four is a long time ago. Is everybody comfortable with this method?
Yeah.
Okay. And similar for similar for the corner lot, we just, we, since you don't have a neighbor here and this block may be different than this block. We said, well, let's give them a five foot deviation, so you could set your home back further if you wanted to, at least five foot. We felt that wasn't a lot of deviation to let somebody have, but it could be enough to give some, a little more interest than looking at a straight row on a corner especially. Plus it might preserve some sight is, distance issues for people. If their home weren't built up as close as their neighbors. Is everybody comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, we didn't really change the setbacks on the side and rear. Really the thing, the building height, we just tried to clean that up. It was a little confusing whichever is less, but basically what this says is you can't have anything over two stories and a one attic or half story with a gable or hip roof, so you can't go over thirty-five foot high. And you can't have three stories, so you can have two stories with an attic. Or two stories or a half story, you know, two and a half stories, whatever they call those. But that, basically the main impetus would be nothing over thirty-five feet high in the development. And two stories for the most part.
And do we have, oh, sorry.
You could have an attic over two stories, but it would have to be within a gable or hip roof. So you can't just have another story and then put a roof on top of it.
Do we have any houses over thirty-five feet?
Oh, yes.
I thi- I think the one, I think there's one on Maryland's four oh five or so. I think that one's three stories at least.
There's a few, most of them were the two and a half, you know, with the attic room. The majority of them were that, less than thirty-five feet.
Him with that thirty-five feet be measured from, say, the front of the house or where, and the reason I'm asking, if you have a, you know, slanted driveway going down, you could be taller than thirty-five feet.
It's, it's at the average grade of, of the front facade. So it's measured from the street view, looking at it from the street.
Okay.
Yard, if it dropped off, then certainly it could have a basement under it or something.
Okay.
From the rear, so.
Good.
Trying to preserve or, well, he's trying to accommodate the front, you know, the view from the street. And then one, the last thing we debated hard was if you look and drive around, ev- every block has a hodgepodge of parking patterns on it. There's not one consistent, unless they have a retaining wall in the front along the street. Then they rear load and that's a few blocks. But other than that, if they don't have a retaining wall, there's a hodgepodge of parking and access points to the homes on the same block. So our question, and those that were on planning commission back then is why the restriction on if it's a duplex, you have to park in the back? And then the second one, like I said, it's a hodgepodge. So I, I don't know, our, our, to us, we would like to get rid of this whole section on parking and let our access standards dictate the parking driveway requirements. And for a duplex, single family duplex, the minimum width would be nine foot, maximum width twenty-four feet wide on the driveway, and that's our standard parking access. Now, if y'all want to drive around and look and think about this one, you know, let us know your thoughts. But really, once again, unless there's a retaining wall along the road that's hodgepodge of whether they access from the alley, if they park in the rear, if they park in the front. It's just, there's not a consistent pattern with all the blocks out there, except for the ones that have the retaining wall. Most of them do, just because of that grade change, they do load from an alley in the back.
About the ones that park on the sidewalks?
Yeah, there's probably plenty of those too. There is an order, it's parking on the sidewalk, so.
If a, if a duplex had a attached garage, say to the left of the building, and you had a driveway going straight into the garage. So you've got the driveway in front, you got the garage, or what if they wanted to park cars on their driveway out in front of the garage?
Well, that's our whole, this section, like I said, staff's recommendation would be just delete this entire section. But that's up to planning commission, I mean, that's your all's. It's what I're asking, would you mind, the majority of y'all, would you mind if we just deleted this section and let our access standards dictate?
I'm with me.
Okay, looks like the majority's giving me a thumbs up or hitting on us, okay. And that's it, I mean, we'll go back. We'll go back and clean those up and try to present you a regulation next time for y'all to consider. If we can't, we'll come back with more questions if we, because we, like I said, we've met several times to debate this as staff. And I know you all have worked diligently on this also and appreciate all that work that's gone in there. But our goal is to try to get a nice regulation that does have some accommodations to those areas. And is not ambiguous, not as ambiguous as the current regulation, so. Questions? And thank you, Sheriff, and all the planning staff and Danielle and everybody that has worked on this.
Amen.
Absolutely.
Good job.
All right, uh, we gonna move on now?
Yes, sir.
Housing Studies Zoning Ordinance Updates.
So with this, we'd spoken a little bit last time about some amendments to look at for the B three areas and multi-family properties. Sheriff, I think I'll steal your thunder and just run through this real quick. We do, what we have seen, and you all saw it tonight and have seen it in the past few and when we look at our multi-families, especially in the B three, and you can see it. Let me get on this slide, let me see what's showing on TV, you can see it on this slide. The B three, y'all seen it, and how many months? It seems like every month we're doing a special use permit for multi-family in a B three or a PBD zone. And the question, one question, simply easy question is staff would recommend that we allow single family and duplex uses by right in B three. So we already allow residential uses by right in a B three zone. Is why not allow multi-family by right in a B three zone? Is there some reason that we feel multi-family is more intense than a big shopping complex in the B three zone? Is it, do you want to, I was gonna say, you know, one reason maybe you want to preserve the B three zone from residential use, but with the single family and duplex by right, that sort of takes that argument out unless we took those out of the B three zone. So first question I would have, would, does anybody have any issue with us making the multi-family by right in a B three zone?
I don't.
Okay, so it looks like we, we'll try to do something on that. The
Recall anybody coming in front of us for a special use permit that we had a heartburn about?
I don't, I don't either, and I don't know why we, like I said, it'd be one thing if you said any residential would have to have a special use, or you just outright didn't allow it in the zone. With the single family and duplex there, it just didn't make a lot of sense to us.
The only thing is we're giving up the, the right to say, well, what about this, what about that? And is that something that we want to preserve?
Our staff, when we looked at it, we debated, you know, intensity. So by right, well, that's our most intense use in a business zone, so you have the pinnacle. Things, you know, you did look at that just because it was in the zone it's in. But you could put any of your B three zones, you could put a big shopping center in those by right, which would be more intense traffic wise, more intense, you know, impervious area wise. Just really intense uses that are allowed in the B three zone. And residential, you know, it is a less intense use from a traffic standpoint than those shopping centers. Now, not during the middle of the night, prob- possibly, depending on how, when the stores closed. But that would be the only thing, I mean, how, how do you make them? You know, if you wanted to go making residential compatible, you wouldn't have You know, if you wanted to go making residential compatible, you wouldn't have allowed the single family duplex by right in there.
But what I'm, what I'm saying is, when we, when we do have these in front of us, we'll talk about everything from where the trash containers are gonna be placed, what the lighting is like and the buffering, uh, and we've, we've changed that uh, from what was presented to other things in the past. And we would be giving up the right to do that. And if we're good with that, then, then we're good with that. But if we're not, we talk about that.
But that's part of site plan with staff.
It is, uh, and, and that's always the, the final thing is that it is up to staff. But um, many, many times, um, we have tweaked uh, on the, the request. Um, I'm not sure that I've got a problem with giving it up. I'm just pointing out the fact that in the past, we have tweaked the requests because we had the right to.
I think I've seen, and uh, you've been doing it a lot longer than I, your members have, uh, but the time I've been here, I've seen it more on the special uses than the R threes and a B three. This, cause there's not really, once again, it's like tonight, you were doing an R three in the middle of a B three area and there really wasn't a screening issue, you know, you want to. So I mean, that was our feelings as staff at least. Like I said, I see it more on special uses where you're getting encroaching maybe into the neighborhoods more than, because once you could put a name your big retail development in a B three, it would have to meet the site plan requirements and screening requirements. And that does not become before the board. So that's why our feeling was why the distinction with a multi-family all of a sudden. And, and you all were in, you know, some of y'all were here when this may have been written this way. I don't know when it became by special use, but just throwing it out there, I mean, it makes more sense to staff. And Sheriff, I think Kingsport, were they special use today? Were they by right? On the R three and B three?
Let me pull that up, just a second.
Then you might've stuck it in here, but I don't think you did.
No, but I have it right here.
And while she's looking that up, the other question, you go to the second bullet point here. You know, we've come up with the R four and R five zones that's buffers between B three and residential to source some step-down zoning. Do we have it, does anybody have an issue to allow those densities? Right now, it's fifteen units per acre, which is more than our R three zone, but less than the R four zone in the B three. So is there any ish, does anybody have uh, issue with allowing those higher densities? R fours, uh, how many, yeah, I had it written down.
R four's twenty.
Density of R four, Sheriff?
Twenty units per acre.
And R five is?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five. Cause I don't know where else applicable, you would try to stick those densities unless you were, like I said, you typically will see them in your higher use zone areas. Your R, your B three area, which is our most intense use from a uh, business standpoint. Once again, the R four would be twenty units per acre and R five would be thirty-five, is that correct, Sheriff?
Right.
So, I mean, we created these zones, but we have a couple that are zoned R four, but they're not really out in uh, business areas, your B three areas where they're zoned R four currently, I do not believe.
No.
So.
What's our requirement for green space or playgrounds or whatever for um, our multi-family?
Uh, multi-family, well, it's similar to this, I'd imagine, Sheriff. The multi-family developments.
Right, it's really in those residential districts somewhat governed by the lot coverage requirements. Um, the planned, um, the um, shoot, I'm forgetting, the uh, planned residential district has an open space requirement. Um, but that's the only residential district that mandates a certain amount of open space. The others should mandate the maximum lot coverage. Right, yeah, I, more density could be okay, but I think green space requiring child area or whatever would be part of that. So I don't know, I think we ought to look at what other people are doing and what's um, to have enough green space or play areas for kids to make it a good, healthy, et cetera. Anyway, and that's overall, not just with this discussion.
Yeah, Tim, I may be off key right here, but uh, when you're talking about fifteen units an acre, I mean, the, the units have to be pretty well standard size or, or the same as, or I mean, you could have different sized units.
Correct. Yes, you could have one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom, four bedroom. But we don't dictate the-
Still no more than fifteen total.
Units, right.
Okay.
Uh, the densities, when you get your R four and R five, you get sixty percent maximum lot coverage on those R four and R five zones versus the forty percent. Uh.
And your landscape ordinance requires mandates a certain um, landscape area, but it still doesn't get to actual um, like playgrounds, features like that.
And none of our ordinances require those amenities. And actually, your lot coverage, when it says lot coverage, that is occupied by all buildings, so it's only for the buildings. It does not include the driveways and parking areas or anything like that currently in our regulations. So when you say lot coverage, you are specifically talking about the building footprints, the total building footprints on a property. But we don't require anywhere in our ordinances, the amount of green space or uh, land like that associated with multi-family developments. Other than it does have landscaping requirements that they have to meet.
Yeah. I think um, you know, even on the next page, when you talk about adaptive use vacant properties, you know, like that one on Broad Street that you have there as an example, I think that would probably be over the fifteen per acre, right? Something like that.
Uh, it's several acres out there, it may be. Not sure, that one's zoned R two, I mean, the difference about that's what it's zoned, so right now it can only be used-
Yeah, I'm, I'm just talking about like a building like that, that if it was in a B three or P, PBD.
Certainly it could be. Uh, that's food for thought on the density. Um, one thing we found interesting, if you look at Kingsports, is they reduced eliminated setback requirements except for the parent tract. In other words, if we, if you did uh, do something internally, had internal lot lines, they didn't have setback requirements except for the parent tract. We found that to be very interesting to uh, you know, that allows a lot more flexibility with the sites, especially if you want to have people build closer to the roads with units. That's an opportunity to allow that to happen than to push them back from the road. And the same with uh, building area requirements on those two. And then uh, one that we come up, when we're talking residential, even the R three, not necessarily B three, but one consideration is we talked about this, uh, it's been several months ago, but requiring the units to be attached instead of, if you're on a lot and say somebody wants to have single units, non-attached units, but want to have all the property in common and sell the single units like a condo, uh, horizontal property regime is uh, you know, that's that could be enticing to somebody to do that instead of having the units attached. So why the three, minimum three units attached in multi-family? Why, why, why would we, would we consider the detached? Just taking the attached part out of the ordinance and letting somebody, if they wanted to do single units detached, let them do the single units detached. I mean, it could still be a multi-family development. Once again, if you start doing individual lots and selling them off, that's a whole different story. And would have to meet the sub-rig requirements. But if you're just doing the horizontal property and they were, all the land was gonna be in common ownership, why that we make them attached to each other? There's a food for thought. And then uh, let me back up this slide.
Tim, on that one, um, there, one of our continuing educations covered some of that. That was pretty interesting that um, at some point, somebody might wanna put the units together. You know, they could afford one, maybe later be able to buy the neighboring one and be able to connect them. And anyway, it was pretty interesting, I liked it.
It allows for flexibility, like for those properties, multi-family. You could do some patio homes, like I said, you sell the unit and maybe the patios or, you know, they share a common patio or something. But they're physically detached from each other, the actual units. Right now, you'd have to cover the patio or something, get a roof between the units to allow that to happen. Uh, just be interesting, I think, once again, what we're trying to do is allow flexibility in some of these developments, more flexibility in design, to see if people, if trends, you know, what people may be wanting to do out there, to not hamper them with some of the older regulations, how they were typically written at the time. Um, I guess the other question here is um, when you look at the setback requirements for residential structures in these B three zones, then these would be for, if you were gonna subdivide in those structures, in those areas, the setbacks.
Hey, Tim, we had to cut you off.
Okay.
Sorry, just one second.
He'll be back on.
Yep, I'll give you a countdown.
I would continue talking about it somewhat, but it's probably not wise. Danielle's sitting there, nope, it's not. Everybody's quiet now that it's eight-thirty and-
I think we're about half asleep.
Yeah.
We're back in for the night, I think. I just wanna know if I can put my taco, taco shells in the oven yet?
Yo, cero tacos, señor.
All right, Tim, I'm gonna count you down.
Okay.
Five, four, three, two, one.
All right, so, once again, is to look at these setback requirements. Mainly the front and rear is not as bad, but the, the side yards, to think about maybe going down to a five yard, five foot side yard setback on each side for uh, your single families. And what this is, uh, you've got your home builders, your national home builders, they're looking for about fifty foot wide lots by a hundred foot deep. And five thousand square foot lots, and they can put a forty foot wide home on those with the five foot on each side. And that allows them, that is the trend, because people are buying those like hotcakes, because they do not want to maintain a big yard. They want a single family home, but they don't want to maintain a big yard. And you look at Fairmount area, you know, you're sort of seeing it go back to those trends back then. The small, you know, the narrow lots, some quite deeper, but the narrow lots and not having a lot of yard to maintain. And uh, would really, staff would make a recommendation, you know, we'd like to recommend to entertain those five yard setbacks, the minimal setbacks on only in not your R ones, but in the B three. Once again, we're talking about residential development and B three zones, PBD, is to allow that flexibility in those uh, setbacks. And again, it's an, it's a very minimalist use in a B three district. It's not even as intense as the multi-family that could go on there, but it's allowing some more flexibility for uh, some development to be allowed in those districts, should they choose to do the single family homes. Like I said, that's your uh, Horton Homes, uh, name your home builder. They're looking for those fifty foot by a hundred foot lots, five thousand square foot lots that they can put a home on and the homeowner has some green space, they're a single family, but they have some green space. Don't have a lot of green space and they are, that is the trend right now in home building for that price range is the smaller lot home. And I wouldn't entertain that for a R one zone, but in a B three zone, why not? I mean, staff would be, why not? Because of uh, what intense zone that is to begin with. That we feel like putting these setbacks on there like you were building in an R one A zone, doesn't make a lot of sense to us.
So Tim also, and I forget if it's Sheriff who talked about the conservation subdivision where you do put small lots in R one, but then you have uh, green space that is, so you push all that extra land into green space and common area. Um, and um, and the concept was um, Nielsen, no, I forget who the guy is. I heard him in Kingsport a bunch of years ago. Um, it's kind of golf, it can be, um, he talked about a golf course without the golf course. So that the majority of people who live on a golf course don't play golf. And, but they like the paths, they like the green space, et cetera. But anyway, um, so yeah, so people have smaller lots, houses are closer together, but there's common area with it, um, and perhaps greenways or whatever that connects stuff, so. Anyway.
And I'm, I'm listening to what you're saying about this, you're talking about the national trend. Um, and I have a hard time vision, visually, visualizing this happening in a B three. I could stand him going out to the edge of town, buying a farm and saying, okay, we're gonna do a development, they're not gonna do something on a five acre track. They're gonna want a, a fifty acre track and, and do something like that. Now you start getting into zoning and spot zoning. If you're going out uh, the middle of nowhere and doing a B three, you're looking real close to spot zoning as opposed to an R zoning that would um, accommodate what they would want to do.
No, what we're trying to do here is not have somebody go out and buy a tract and want it zone B three, is to allow, you know, B three by rights, you can have single family and duplex already. And by rights, you can have, well, by special use, and we would, when everybody seemed to be okay with it by right, to have multi-family in those, in that zone. And our, what staff is trying to do is look at the zone and say- And our, what staff is trying to do is look at the zone and say, if these are allowed by right, could we not be less restrictive on some of the issues like the side yard setbacks to allow and then more intense single family use in these high intense zones that you already have, that could be anything from a shopping center to a single family home. This, our intent is just to look at these B three areas and say, should somebody choose to do those, should we be as restrictive on these setbacks as we are, like you were almost trying to force them into an R one A zone all of a sudden from a B three? And we do have some strategic development areas that have been adopted by, uh, along the parkway, and, uh, to, and that could be, you know, adopted for those uses on those strategic development areas to, uh, you know, cause if you want that mixed single family, multi-family commercial use in those areas that, uh, we've established, but also, we have some interest currently in some B three properties that not, they don't want to do B three things, that this, the area does not dictate the B three. And, but they do want to do some single family homes and do that type, some of those types of developments, and when we started looking at the ordinance, we're like, wonder why we are so restrictive in a B three for this restrictive for residential. I mean, that's what got us started looking at this. And like I said, those home builders are looking for those five thousand square foot lots.
I guess the point I'm making and the question I've got is instead of trying to make a B three work, what if we had a different zone, a new zone, that catered to what you're talking about? And then you, um, you, you catered it right down to everything that you're talking about, instead of trying to make it fit into a B three. And then, and also what that would do is because we do have a, a shortage in, in housing, maybe that would encourage some of these national guys to come in and do some subdivisions um, that would fit into a, uh, the new type of zone that we're talking about.
I mean, that's a, that's a way we could do it, to allow it more, I mean, once again, we're just looking at the B three because of what y'all have been through in the past months on, uh, special use permits for multi-family, and that got us looking at the residential, the single family, why are we so restrictive on setbacks and things inside the B three? I would suggest, you know, at some point, we do look at our residential zonings to allow, open it up possible for a different zone. We have that planned residential development now, I think, has some flex, more flexibility in it. I don't think the setbacks are as flexible in that planned residential development. And the green space requirements in that PRD, uh, are, can be high, I mean, cause it has to be usable green space. So, uh, but it's something we could look at, but I would suggest for your density sake, I mean, when you look at residential zones, you obviously look at those densities per acre, is try to, uh, you know, it'd have to be almost like you said, a new residential zone established somewhere in between an R three and our R two zone to allow some different density, and we can do that, I'm not opposed to that, I don't think staff's opposed to that as an additional zone. We're just trying to look, and like I said, we have some development, uh, some development.
Yeah, what I'm asking, is it better to try to tweak existing zones or look at a brand new zone that does everything in today's world? The way the, the builders wanna do it today, the way the residents are, what they're looking for? And, and we were to create a zone that, uh, catered to that?
No, I think that's a good, good thing to do, I mean, that's, I don't disagree with that at all. Well, I, like, again, I said, we had some interest in some B three from a multi-family to, uh, single family. And so that's why we had just started looking at the B three part of it, to try to see cause once again, we were just looking at intensities of use in the B three that are allowed already. Not that we weren't, you know, I think it is very wise to go look at those, and even if it's a new residential zone, uh, instead of the R two, you know, somewhere in between an R two and R three for a single family duplex type developments. So I agree with that, to do that. I think, once again, then ultimately, you'd need to tweak your B three to allow it inside of it maybe, or allow, uh, more intense use or less setback inside possibly. I think your B three could look different slightly than the residential zone that you're talking about could, doesn't have to if you're gonna allow it inside a B three, so. It's food for thought right now, I mean, we'd like to try to draft some, we'll, we'll look at both and see what we can come up with from a regu- regulation standpoint. And try to get that in front of you all to, uh, more, better look at it, what it may look like.
Okay, what else do you need from us tonight on this?
Uh, Sheriff, do you think we've got everything to start working that we need?
I think so, I think we've got the, um, at least we can start a draft, or start some draft ideas, I guess is probably the right way to say it.
So, I think we've got what we need from you all.
Okay, we're ready for training update?
Oh, well, let's, uh, just once, be thinking about this adaptive reuse, and the biggest one being the Fairmount, or Fairmount, uh, Rosemont School has recently changed hands. Uh, they do have some ideas they want to throw out for use. It does not fit in our current zonings, R two. Is there, and we can craft some regulations to see if you all would like to entertain some denser uses for dwelling units or other uses that may be compatible with the neighborhood to go in those specifically looking at Rosemont right now, but there are some other challenged buildings out there that short of being torn down and developed residentially will just be sitting there at some point, so.
Tim, I have a question about the building on Cedar. Will the, the renovation of Cedar, uh, take that building or, or not?
No, the East Cedar Street improvements will not take the building. It'll all be along the frontage, the existing right of way.
It's awfully close now to the right of way.
It is, but I mean, it still fits within the existing right of way.
I'd say for sure pursue that. But that whole concept.
Okay.
That's.
I agree with Margaret.
Um, yeah.
All right, we'll look at that. So, not to steal your thunder, but training. Uh, Ms. Smith will present property rights and looking at the, what was the other topic y'all had asked us about during the?
The one other topic I have on my list is, is criteria to be applied when you're looking at a rezoning?
Yes.
So.
Uh, and we want to do that training at five PM right before the December Planning Commission meeting, which currently is scheduled for the twenty first, and y'all may want to move that since that's Christmas week, but we can talk about that more next month if you wanna move December's meeting. So, uh, but we'd like to have that training at five PM before the December meeting. Uh, everybody has to have one hour of property right training, this training, so please make sure to attend, or we'll have to, uh, I guess we could record it, and, uh, y'all could watch the recording, is that correct, Danielle?
I, I think that would be fine, um, and it, it's possible if, you know, if we have electronic meetings extended through the end of the year, that the whole thing would be electronic and recorded anyway, so.
And then make sure you get your other hours, y'all have your list, I'm not gonna call out names, Mr. Chairman, but, uh.
Really?
Now that the Braves are no longer playing, I'll be spending some time on those seminars.
Mr. Buck might be in the same boat, so.
A utility training for a city council is twelve hours for, for twelve to fifteen hours, so planning commission gets off easy with four, so.
But, yes, make sure to get your training, if you do trainings, uh, please report them to us, uh. Once again, that one hour training will propose five PM on December meeting. Then we'll talk about the time for the December meeting. Uh, next Planning Commission meeting will be November sixteenth, so it's hard to believe, we're moving on with the year. That's all I have. Mr. Chairman?
Um, it's not on the agenda, what's the, uh, update on, um, sun setting?
Uh, we took that off the agenda, we had a regulation, Danielle and staff worked really hard to present for you all to adopt. We pulled that off the agenda to, uh, we went back and we're looking at other language, we'd been so intent on the sun setting part of it and have that language ready. When we started reading the other language in that regulation, we felt, uh, we need to clean up some other language in there, just when we started reading other language, but the sun setting part, we do have that ready to go, we're gonna bring it to y'all next month with some other cleanup in there that we noticed. Uh, to clarify some things and put in there some provisions for when you all are put, the biggest thing was provisions for what people need to show on a plan for you all to look at a special use permit. What, you know, what drawing information they need to put on there. There's nothing in the reg that spells that out in any of the zoning ordinance, so we really wanted to add that in, and that's what, the biggest thing we noticed as we were getting ready to, uh, it was actually printed and ready to put in the packet, so we're like, oh, we need to look at this other stuff, we'd been so intent on looking at the sun setting part, but we will have that regulation to you all for consideration next month with some, uh, additional items inside of that, that we haven't discussed, so.
Thank you, sir. Running around the horn real quick, are there any members that, um, have an issue or anything they wanna say or bring up? Staff?
Your house for supper, right?
Hey, I just put the shells in the oven.
Maybe you got.
I've got enough, come on.
Yeah, Kelly, I would like to say one thing.
Yes, sir.
Oh, I'd like to tell Jason, we're all praying for him to get through this season.
My word.
With, with some sanity.
Oh. Where, where is Jason, is he still on here?
I could just make one public service announcement for all the voters out there that may be watching. Do not wear your campaign material within a hundred feet of a polling location. It is a classy misdemeanor. And treat our election officials who are on the front lines of this pandemic with respect as they carry out their duties and uphold their oath.
Thank you, sir.
Jackson.
What else say?
And one, uh, other item, uh, we are having East Cedar, East Cedar Street, uh, construction meetings with the public. First one's tomorrow night at six PM at the Slater Center Gym. Uh, and, uh, following Tuesday, the twenty seventh at six PM, also in Slater Center Gym, so any resident out in the area in East End that wants to come by and hear about the construction has started out there, uh, on the King University property. Uh, be more than happy to have them there at those meetings. And they will, if you do come, please, masks are required inside the building, and you will be screened in, so we do appreciate that.
The ironic part is that road y'all are cutting is where the road used to be. Or pretty close.
Yes, it is.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, anything else? Let's eat tacos.